Ten months ago, so she won't be able to join us. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go on to student reports, I'd like to bring to the board's attention that there is a revised recommended motion regarding the budget that is a single sheet of paper in front of you. It takes into account the discussion that we had on Tuesday to purchase in advance certain technology that then allows the budget to remain the same but to restore the 20% student per pupil allocation. So motions aren't motions until they're actually introduced. So when we come to that time in the budget, I'll introduce this recommended motion, not the one that's on the agenda. For those in the audience who may have focused on the student, per student allocation budget, if you want to go back to the back table, you'll see copies back on the back table. Having said that, any questions from board members on that? Having said that, so Ms. Molly Baker, if you want to give the reports for both Ward and Ludlow and for your other three compatriots.
Okay. So this week, we started the course selection process. Last night, there was a presentation for parents about possible courses, and throughout next week, the students will be hearing the presentation. And we're urging students and families to utilize the program of studies in order to learn more, and there's also information on the website. And to continue that, next week, we're hosting Eighth Grade Night where eighth graders and their parents come and learn about all the core classes but also all the electives that we offer. And today, at Ludlow, the seniors got to participate in our annual volleyball tournament, so that was really fun as well.
Okay. Any questions for our soon-to-be college freshman at a certain university? Any questions for Ms. Baker?
No.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
On to public comment. This is the time where members of the public can come forward and talk to the board about business items, which may include the budget, but you're also able to talk about the budget when it's up for a vote. You just can't do both. So either choose to do it beginning or wait for the vote after we have some discussion on it. So with having that been said, any member of the public wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
John Convertino, Oyster Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, PTA Council President. First, let me thank you for your service. Your position on this board is one of trust. You, as individuals and as a group, have been entrusted with the single largest town expenditure and the one that has the most impact on the success of this town. Having sat on the other side of this table, I know the burden that this place is on you. In watching the last few budget meetings, either in person or on fair TV, I have been struck by the lack of rigor and analysis that this board has put forward. You have before you a budget that has dramatic shifts in programming and resources. I don't believe anybody in this room would argue against the new STEAM programming and the CLC initiatives contained in this budget. The question is, to what extent and to what cost to other programmings? What you are doing in this budget is borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. There are reductions in art, business ed, reading, language arts, world languages, school allocations, computer sciences, health tech, music, math, social studies, and the hundreds of thousands of dollars these funds being shifted to new programming, again, at what cost to the educational program and our students. There has been no long-term facilities analysis of what the new CLC model will do to student and school capacity, facilities utilization, racial imbalance, and a possible redistricting. There has been no analysis as to where these funds will come from next year and in the following years. If you believe in these new initiatives, fund them. Don't demean other programming for the sake of new initiatives. There seems to be some magic number here of 3.1%. To the extent that some conversations on the board were looking for PTAs and PTA Council to supplant, cut, proposed funds. PTAs and PTA Council never supplant funding. They may on occasion supplement; they never supplant. I don't know where 3.1% came from, but I urge you to abandon that thinking. The shifting of funds and reductions in programming in this budget will continue to erode teacher innovation and staff morale. If you believe in the initiatives, fund them. I have said numerous times, and I'm going to say it again, when I first sat on this board, then Board of Finance Chair Tom Flynn said to me, "Your role is to put forward the best program you can." It is the role of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to determine if they can afford it, and then the role of the RTM to determine if they want to pay for it. You have been entrusted to advocate for the best possible educational program you can put forward. If you do not, who will? This budget as proposed does not meet the educational needs of our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward and present to the board? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move on to new business. First item of budget, business, is the budget. As I indicated, the revised amendment, the revised motion that will be placed on the table follows the discussion from last Tuesday, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve an operating budget to be forwarded to the town of Fairfield for the 2018-19 fiscal year in the amount of $173,956,991. Amended as follows, reallocate $403,602 from Technology Summary Object 503 to restore the 20% student per pupil allocation reduction to be appropriated to each school. Do I have a motion? Ms. Vitale, do I have a second? Ms. Jacobson? So the motion is before us. I'd ask, on Tuesday, we talked about using money from this year's budget, that we have some insurance savings due to the Partnership 2.0 decision by the state, and use that to pre-purchase things that were in the budgeted for 1819, and then that would free up, in this instance, the $403,000 and change to be reallocated back to student allocation accounts. And so I'll ask the superintendent to explain why the staff looked at various alternatives and chose that one.
Originally, we were talking about the science materials, but I think the board did discuss and pointed out just the volatility of the materials, and we don't know exactly what those materials will be. So when we're aiming for a dollar amount, like $403,000, it's difficult to know if you're buying $60 quantity, or is it $450? Where something like technology in that line item is very easy for us to know. We know exactly what the expense is now, so for us to come in close to that 403 is very doable and much easier than it would be in science. And the other thing is, it does just release pressure for science. They may want to buy some materials in the summer, wait and buy some more in October or November after their new courses have started. So after meeting with the executive team, we felt like this was a better way to recommend that the board do that.
With that, are there questions and/or comments on the budget in general? This is the meeting where we say, if there are any other questions that have come up between Tuesday and now, or any questions that didn't seem to be answered as fully as you might like, that before we act on the budget, we give one last chance to board members to raise those questions. So are there any questions that people want to ask on any aspect of the budget? Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
One question I'd raised on Tuesday that I didn't see in the answers was regarding the idea of a priority two list. I didn't know if you'd had a chance, and it didn't have to be in writing. I had just asked if you would be able to be ready to speak to that tonight, and so I proffer to you the opportunity to speak to that tonight, is that I'm just wondering, what are the ideas that leadership had for moving the district forward that, at the end game, didn't make the cut? Again, very much in line with what Mr. Cullen does with maintenance every year, so in the broad scope, then.
And the priority two list relates to capital projects on that list, correct?
That's, again, the designation used by Mr. Cullen, and so now I'm applying his term to the entire budget.
Yeah.
We don't have, as you know, a priority two that's actually in writing that we use, like facilities. We certainly could look at that going forward. The items that are in District Improvement Plan would be things that we discussed early on, like K-2 world language would be a prime example. We were actually in that discussion again today. Looking at caseloads for special education, looking at all aspects there, our CLC, our general education, our speech caseloads, but one of the reasons that's not factored in is we knew we wanted to go through this consultant study, which we will be doing all spring, because we also don't want to just put staff in when we're not really sure that it's even equitable K-12. Are we understaffed in one area, overstaffed in another? So we're in the middle of that right now, and I think that's going to be very helpful for us going into next year. Looking at some of our, just materials and supplies in general, the 20% obviously was a big part of that discussion, but I can assure you that even this year, we wouldn't, I would not have put it in the budget if I felt like we were hurting the district. So, and I'm very happy with the decision the board is making to help us restore that. But this budget, we felt like we were putting forward, actually a very good budget, and the things that we needed to do this year and that we could manage are actually in this budget. And I know I said this early on to the board, that we felt like we were aiming towards our priorities and putting them in this budget and felt very good about it. Actually, I would say the first pass-through we had of the budget, where last year, I don't think any of us felt that way, we were, you know, we had $2 million of things that we just weren't able to do. And I feel like in this budget, other than really world language was the big one, that, you know, we know is in the District Improvement Plan, we feel like we're doing exactly what's in the District Improvement Plan and moving us forward. And I think part of what's helping us, that sometimes people don't realize, is, you know, in elementary, when you're going down three sections, those are three positions that you can recapture. And we, you know, we were very thoughtful this year in looking at programming and how we can use positions more effectively. Our IIT position is changing, but that position's going from part-time to full-time. It's not going in reverse. And our principals overwhelmingly, when we met with them, you know, about adding this to their programming, literally clapped. They were so excited about the change. We feel like the STEAM program and Gifted and what we're doing there is actually moving us forward, and again, it's doing exactly what is in our District Improvement Plan. And I think the things that will come next, would we love to be doing science for middle school? That's going to be a next, but it's really a priority one. It's just you can only do so much in a year, even professional development with the staff. So we can certainly work on a more comprehensive list for you, but overall, I feel like this budget actually is doing what we set out to do at the beginning, and we didn't have to slice and dice and take a lot of items out of this budget. We just didn't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from board members on the motion and/or the entire budget? The 20% student per pupil allocation, while most elementary and middle school allocation amounts were reduced by 20%, the high school was reduced and then restored, so it's not like the high school is going to get a 20% boost. They're just going to go back up to the levels that, I'll say, that were the per-student amount from 1718 times the projected enrollment, what it would have been. Is that a correct statement?
Yes. We'll take that same allocation and apply it just like we would have in this current school year.
Correct. Just to make sure board members don't look and say, "Well, I multiplied the amount by 20% and I didn't get it."
And if I may just add too, one thing, I think, early on, people don't understand it sometimes about the per-student allocation, is it's also based on the number of students projected in the building. So if you're having, you know, you're losing 50 students in a building, the allocation is going to go down, so that doesn't mean we reduced it at central office because we wanted to reduce a percentage. Has to do with student enrollment. So I would say when the new board book does come out, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, but we didn't reduce any of those line items in programming. When you're seeing anything that's not part of that 20%, it's natural attrition or student enrollment-driven.
Mr. Asa.
Through the chair to Dr. Jones. I know Ms. Munzel touched on it, but the question was asked at the last meeting by Mr. Dwyer bringing up, when Dr. Tittle was here, was part of that reduction reallocated? And I think we kind of touched on that. Was any more, was there any more time looking into that? Were you able to verify that?
Yeah, and again, these questions, obviously, we get them out as fast as we can. There's a one sheet, and on the very backside, on page two at the bottom, it does give you the history from 2011, 10/11 through 1819. And Ms. Munzel tried to be helpful for us at the bottom, where you can see, things have come in and out of those budgets. So that's, you're not really comparing just apples to apples when you look at 2010 and you look at 2018. Copy paper may have been put in, but like technology, those items are staying at the district level. If you look back at 2010, the software, the district picked that up and started paying for the software, but that obviously was an expense we could see was going to continue to grow for schools. So that just gives you a picture of what the actual allocation amount has been.
So my memory was correct because it preceded Ms. Munzel's time here, and that over time, things have gone in and out. I don't think that changes the message that Mrs. Maxon Connolly was delivering. It just more accurately shows it.
So this one is, can you ask, is that the last accurate?
Anything else from board members?
2015, 16.
So we'll go out to the public, then we'll vote, so if any board members wish to make a final comment on the budget, the time to do it is now and not after the vote, because then we'll be moving on to the next item for Robert's rules. Mrs. Vitale.
I'd just like to thank the staff for their work on this, and I'm very happy with the 20% allocations restored to the schools. And I'm really hoping that this board as a whole, my hope is that we approve this unanimously and send it forward with all of us behind it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing no hands, go up. Out to the public, if any member of the public would like to come forward to comment on the recommended motion, which is the revised one that is on the back table, that includes restoring the student allocation amounts. Please state your name and address.
Hi there. It's been a while since I've been up here, but my name is still Lisa Havy, and I still live on Longview Avenue, and I'm still a dedicated participant in our local PTAs. I'm here tonight to speak to the discussions that this board has had about PTAs funding short caps in the budgets. And being a good little doobie, I went on the national site and got a few pointers that we have adhered to at our PTA Council for all the years that I've been involved and for years past. So forgive me while I read a few points. It is true that PTAs frequently turn over their funds to school administrators for such basics as books, equipment, and maintenance, not to mention extras such as playground equipment and vending machines. The relationships that have developed between PTAs and schools have blurred the line about what PTAs are, what vision, the mission, and purpose we follow, and how our funds should be used. The vision of PTA, I'm going to select two points here, are to secure adequate laws for the care and protection of children and youth, along with to bring into closer relationship the home of this, the home and the school. The parents and teachers may cooperate intelligently in the education of children and youth. How these PTAs work. PTA funds raised by PTA members belong exclusively to PTA and can only be used on purposes approved by its members through the budgetary and amending process. Approved uses for funds should be in line with the mission and objections, objectives, pardon me, of the PTA as a whole body. What PTAs are not. PTAs are not a supporting organization for the schools where they hold their meetings. Supporting organizations often contract directly with school districts to act on behalf of the schools and are subject to school oversight and approvals for such items as their budgets. PTAs are not an additional funding source for goods, services, and payroll for public schools. School funds should be supplied by governmental entities. PTAs advocate for the adequate funding of schools from government sources. They do not replace funds not supplied by governments. Therefore, supplies purchased by PTA funds should be given directly to children, not to teachers. PTAs are not to pay bills handed over by the principal of the school. If the school ordered it, the school pays for it. This PTA respects and follows the funding directives set forth by National PTA.
Ms. Havy, you're at the three minutes, or you've got a couple more sentences?
I have one more sentence.
Please finish.
It's a bit of a run-on, but I'll make it short. If your school board, principal, or teachers try to assume control of your PTA's budget as though it were their own, just say no. Remember that PTA doesn't work for the school; it works on behalf of children and families. Thank you. Those are my remarks.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to come forward? If so, you've already spoken on the budget. You've already spoken on the budget. Each member of the public gets to speak once. And we all have different hats, and if we went down the path that each member of the public got to speak four or five times based on the hats, so, but thank you very much for your comments. Any other member of the public wish to come forward?
Sorry. Good evening. I apologize. I'm assuming we are discussing the budget. I hope I haven't sat down and...
We're discussing the motion that's on the table, which is the budget, which is the revised motion, which...
Where we're putting back 10%? Is that...
20%.
But keeping it still at 3.1%?
Keeping it 3.1%, but allocating 20, back to the, restoring the 20%.
Okay. And may I just ask for a ruling, just so I don't get into trouble? If I speak on the amendment, when the overall vote comes forward, before that, will I also be allowed to speak or...
Revised motion, so there's no amendment to it. The motion is the motion.
Okay, fine. Thank you. I sincerely apologize. I should have been more timely. Suzanne Meska, 123 Ragate Road. I've been watching from home, enjoying the television immensely. I understand what everyone wants to do regarding supplies and putting back where you feel it's been cut. I have to say, this budget, there's a lot, the process that you all went through this time, this is my third superintendent, has been phenomenal. I can't say enough how, as a member of the public, to see your questions, which were extremely thorough, and the responses from staff has been amazing. It really gives you a full view of the complexities of which you were all dealing with. On the other side of the equation is, you know, the financial situation that's affecting so many in this town, not just the students. And I know you've been extremely diligent in looking at that. I just feel like at some point, you have to be willing to take the recommendation of the superintendent and the principals in each of their sites, that they're making the right decision, that they can try to live with a little bit less. And going forward, unfortunately, you know, the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, the town, the libraries, we're all going to have to figure out how we reset our priorities. And I think if we take baby steps by trying this this year, by not adding back in, you know, for supplies and instructional materials, you know, I'd like to see how it works. I mean, we did this three years ago when we froze an entire budget, and we didn't pay for substitutes at the high school. We cut back on paper because we had 17 unknown in the special ed side, and we actually froze the entire budget, and we survived. So I think I would like you to heed this and not necessarily add back anything, even though I know you've got money, you know, that you can pre-purchase this year. It would send a message that you are trying really hard to look at things from a different angle, you know, to meet, you're hearing the words coming from other town boards as well, which is, you know, we all are in this together, and sometimes we're going to have to make some small sacrifices in order to keep the things that are most important. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to come forward to present to the board on the recommended Seeing none, back to the board. Any final comments from board members? Mrs. Maxon Connolly, followed by Mr. Asa.
A few comments regarding this budget and how much I'm pleased that we are putting back the 20%. And I completely appreciate the comments we've gotten from the public and from emails, but this is a town whose education, we haven't suffered the death of 1,000 cuts, but we have been picking at this budget even as we increase. I'm not saying we've been decreasing the budget; we know we haven't. But to say that we aren't doing everything we want is putting it mildly. And what I actually really like about the idea that we can restore this 20% is, it has given the principals, it's been forced them in the position of saying, what are we going to be forced to do without? Very interestingly is that the high school principal headmasters had to come back and say, "In fact, we can't." They had to ask for that restoral of funds for certain fixed costs. That's how close to the bone they are already working with their budgets, that they had to come back and do that and not do what the other head administrators were doing. And by doing that cut and by going through that exercise, what I do think that this funding being restored will give the principals the opportunity to say, "Okay, if in fact we were able to, or we're going to force ourselves to do without, who's to say that the money will go back the same way?" Maybe they can look at some other more interesting, more creative ways that that allocation can help in the education of the students of their buildings. So I think it was a useful exercise, but I have absolutely no interest in holding to that. I appreciate the sentiment that went into it, and I think we're all thrilled that we can restore that funding to the principals, but we are cutting and cutting and cutting. It's coming, and 3.1% is by no means a parsimonious approach to educational budgeting, but I look at the budgets of the surrounding towns and what their increases are, and we have been living to the bone for a very long time. No animal in wildlife lives on, as a bony creature. At some point, you suffer for that, and I don't want to wait to start suffering, because once your reputation starts to go down, restoring it is brutally difficult. I would rather be known as the district which supports its education, its administration, its staff. Some districts may be known for being incredibly generous. Kudos to them. The whole town benefits from that. And so, again, I respect the idea. I think we have been living very frugally, and I still think this is a very frugal budget. You know, to say that we have survived the past few years, is that our goal? Survival? You know, lots of, there are plenty of districts in this state which are surviving. That's not the same thing as thriving. I would like to thrive. I would like to give our district the resources to thrive and to not say, "Kudos to us; our noses are above water right now." That is not what I see our role as being, and sometimes it has felt that way. They've had the opportunity to look at this different angle, and to ask that we make small sacrifices? There's $2.3 million in the 2017-18 budget, which is not being funded. There's $2.3 million in the 2017-18 budget, which is not being funded. $2.3 million that this board said, in its previous form, said that we need, for the best education that we can put forward this year, that ultimately the Board of Selectmen approved, that the Board of Finance approved, that the RTM approved, and 2.3 million of that we never got to spend on the education for our students. So to put back this 403,000, I would like to be looking at that other 2.3 million. I sensed Tuesday that I have no support for that. I'm not putting it forward. But that's where I'd like the conversation to be. How can we bring that budget forward? How can we support our district in that way so that we are known as the district that is thriving, not surviving? I think that is not the message we want to send.
Thank you. Mr. Asa?
Yeah, just a couple of questions on procedure, so forgive me for being new. We're talking about reallocation, and I know we're talking about the new budget, but in the current budget that we're in now, moving money around and reallocating and stuff, does that not have to come to the board under our policy for over a certain dollar amount to move? And does that have to take place tonight before we can commit to question for the superintendent of the chair?
By past practice, it does not come to us tonight. Each June, balancing $170 million budget requires ins and outs on various account line items. We trust to the CEO, the superintendent, to make those subtle adjustments throughout the year, keep us informed through quarterly reports. And then in June, there is a motion that is put on the table that fulfills the requirement to approve all of those changes, pluses and minuses. In the main, it's about 1% of the budget that we find that we're shifting from one line item to another line item, again, to balance out the pluses and the minuses of a budget. So you'll see that in June.
So just to clarify, I should have been more clear. I'm trying to, just because I was looking through the policy to make sure we're doing everything right here, and I was referencing Policy 3170A, which, to me, just stood out to me that references any reallocation of $10,000 or more between major classifications, and those are defined as personnel services, fixed charges, per pupil expenses, pupil personnel expenses, school expenses, support expenses, maintenance, operation, transportation, and capital. So that was what I was bringing up, so.
And that is correct. And the way the board has implemented that policy is to do it once a year in June after all of the pluses and minuses are made. That doesn't mean the board couldn't say, well, let's take a look at that practice, but that's been our practice. Did you have any other questions that you wanted?
No, like I said, I just, I want to make sure that we're following the policy and doing it the right way.
Okay. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
And just agreeing with Mr. Dwyer, the notion that if that's something that we as a board think we want to have more of a hands-on approach to change, then we should have that discussion. And if it's something that the policy committee needs to take up and be more specific, we can. But I know also part of the idea is that we still have six months to go, and any adjustment we make right now, next month, we could get very different news and have a whole other adjustment that needs making. So this is kind, this is sort of why we went to the quarterly reports. When we were having it monthly, something that could look alarming just needed some time to, if I can borrow an RTM phrase, smooth out a little bit. And so, so that's part of the idea behind that.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking in terms of this million dollars, and, you know, we're taking 403,000 now, but as Dr. Jones stated to my question in the last meeting, we're not sure what is going to be left at the end, because there could be an unexpected expense.
Correct.
But I'm just saying, I think that big number items, like the $2 million that's going to go to special ed, and this rest of this hopefully million dollars, I would just like to see those big things come before the board, not to micromanage it, but I think for the public and for the board, it's important to keep along with that policy.
And I would suggest that the discussion is, does it come before the board? Yes. By example, when we had to freeze the budget back when, three, four years ago, when we had the issue with special education, the line items that were frozen were presented in a report to the board. We just didn't vote on it until June, when the 2.3 needed to be held back. That, we got a sheet that said, here are the line items, so it was reported to the board, we just didn't vote on it. So there's a, that's the only difference.
And I remember there was discussion with some board members about whether that should be voted on or not, and I believe at that time, if my memory serves me right, we had talked about when it does come to a head and we know what the outcome is, that it would just come back to us, at least for discussion, so.
And so unless the new board gives different direction, we'll continue with the practice of June, but that would be a question that if you wanted to pursue it, attend one of the policy committee meetings and advance that discussion, because it would require a change in policy.
Because right now, policy is open, and it's big enough that it can stipulate timing.
So if you wanted the policy...
The policy that I referenced, 3170A?
Yes, to be more directive than it is, to follow up on your conversation, then you'd be asking the policy committee to revise the policy and be more directive.
Okay, because I was reading, only the board, upon recommendation of the superintendent, may authorize individual transfers of more than $10,000. So that's what caught my eye. So that, to me, I interpreted it differently, so.
Other comments that board members wish to make before we put the motion, until we act on the motion? Seeing none, the motion in front of you is to let the Board of Education approve an operating budget to be forwarded to the town of Fairfield for the 2018-19 fiscal year in the amount of $173,956,991. Amended as follows, reallocate 403,602 from Technology, summary object 503, to restore the 20% student-per-pupil allocation reduction to be appropriated to each school. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. So we'll go on to Item B, which is the second quarter financial report. So I'll ask Mrs. Monsell to come forward. Does the superintendent have any advanced comments that she wishes to make?
No, I think it's in your packet for you, and...
So you have comments that you wish to make, and then we'll open it up to questions from board members.
Okay. Yeah, hopefully the write-up is self-explanatory, so I'll just concentrate on the projected expenses page, just very simplistic. It's got the areas of, that we are under budget and areas that were over budget, and that column one is what, is the projected balance. As of 12/31, the projected balance on, on June 30th. So for instance, personnel services, right now it's about 60,000 that we think we'll have in that category to be able to do something else with. Wage and benefit, this was really, if you knit that out with the FICO medic that's down below, that nets out to like a positive 8, 9,000. You know, some savings in copy supplies, health insurance, that's the big one, there's the million dollars. So we highlighted that. Other areas with tech services, extracurricular salaries, life insurance, technology supplies. We know we have some tuition for magnet schools, that won't change, utilities, the heat and the water. And then going further, areas that were over budget, this is a little confusing, but you might remember that we, when we did the 2.3 reserve, we actually moved that money into its own account. So right now, the maintenance accounts, project accounts, don't have that funding in it, so we're showing that as an overage, because it's not real, it's not in the budget in that line item. Maintenance services is over slightly.
Can I just interrupt for one second? I don't know if this is out of order, I apologize. Can you just go back to that and clarify? I didn't quite follow what you were talking about with the reserve and everything.
On the maintenance project?
Back to an accounting question.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe as I go on to the second column, that'll make sense, okay? Transportation, that's special ed transportation. The pension is the 129 plus possibly a little bit on the 401A disability insurance. We know that the rate had gone up this year. Operational plant equipment, there's a risk management account that's in a negative because of certain things that happened that aren't foreseen. Special education is the 1.926. Special ed subs is about 4,500, and the summer school is 60. And electricity, we're going to be over because of the transmission charges. So that's a projected negative balance of 2.9. It nets out, the overages, I mean, of 2.9, so the net is the million savings in insurance. Because the next column, obviously, we knew we would, we tried to keep the health insurance as a separate item. So in order to cover these overages, we took the two point, on the bottom line, we took the $2.3 million reserve, and we allocated it back up where it, where we would need it, or where we would want to put it. So go straight up to special education first. We went there, had to cover that. Okay, the 1.926 and the 4,500 and the, we only needed 53,000 to cover the subs. The 129 for the pension, that was part of the 2.3, that was a designated item. Then we ended up only needing 57,000 for electricity, and then we've been talking about needing to, or wanting to put, restore some of the funding to maintenance projects. So we were able to put 209 back into the maintenance projects. So what we did in that second column was take the total 2.3 reserve and allocate it right now where we need to cover shortages. Now, so back to the maintenance piece, because the money that was budgeted initially is not in there, we had to, to balance out, we had to show it as an overage and then put the money back in from the allocation.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I have more, but yeah.
Okay. Well, why don't we finish with the presentation, then we'll go to balance of our questions.
Actually, that's, that's, those are the highlights of what we know at the moment. There's not much to say about the report itself. I don't know, the new members might have some questions, but maybe it's just easier to take questions?
Okay. Can I, Mr. Asa, you had your hand up?
Yes. So on this maintenance project's portion of 436,695, so that would be the total of, in that frozen reserve, that's dedicated to maintenance, right? So that would mean that we would still have to come up with 227,600 roughly to complete those projects. And what we're talking about, and we just voted on, of that 1,007, we're taking 403,000 away from that, basically, right? By what we're going to be doing with pre-purchasing. So roughly 600,000 left. And so I guess I would just like to make the comment that I would like, if we have the money, and there are not major unforeseen expenses, I would, as a preference, I think it's very important, and just to state the fact, that we try and fund that 227,000 and catch us up with maintenance for last year and get those projects done, because as we talked about, it would just create a priority waterfall change if we didn't. So with 600 left, I'm hopeful, and I'll cross my fingers that we can fund that.
Anybody else have a question? I have one question, but anybody else have a question? The ones that are over budget, and I'll take transportation, 126,900, 127,000, you don't have an offset on that line, correct?
Correct.
So how are you going to balance that line item?
With other, other balances within the budget?
So either other balances that show up in the budget later on, or part of the million dollars will have to go to covering some of these that have no counterbalancing number next to it. So it's a, I think Mr. Asa is correct, if there is money available, and then let's use it for as much maintenance as we can accomplish. And I think that's the point that I think we were making on Tuesday, but it is a fluid situation and will require Mr. Cullen and his staff to do a lot of work in June.
Because I think it's roughly about $260,000 of unbalanced items here.
Correct. Other questions from board members on the quarterly financial report? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussion of special meetings for facility issues. As you know, Mrs. Vitale had spoken frequently about how do we address the facility issues that are in front of us? And so she asked if she could have a discussion at the board table on this, so we put it on the agenda, and I'll call on Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you for adding it to the agenda. For FOI, this probably could have been handled in a group email, but here we are. As we know, there is a district initiative that focuses on facilities. And I will just read it, just to remind anyone who might have forgotten. Study and determine best use of all facilities through engaging community input on structural change with the assistance of engaging an outside consultant. The Ad-Hoc Committee for Operational Effectiveness started this work. We all chose to disband that committee, and I feel like since then, the discussion has been somewhat stalled. And in the interim, we've received a number of documents that addresses some of the work that was done. We got the 10-year projections. Malone and McBroom did a presentation that included a number of scenarios that caused some concern from certain neighborhoods in town. And I feel that we need to pick up that discussion, and I wanted to bring it before all of us to decide the best way to do that. I did address it with the chair about whether or not we could fit it in to the agenda of one of our regular meetings and just with the budget and other things that are coming down the pike. It didn't really seem like there was time. I debated, you know, doing a bylaws change for a standing committee, but based on some conversations that we've all had over the last six months and during the campaign season, it seemed like there was an appetite for there to be some, a discussion of the full board together. So I guess I'm just looking for some, you know, some guidance from the board and to hear your thoughts on how to move this conversation forward, because in the midst of some of these open-ended documents that we haven't all discussed together, we do have a long-range facilities plan, which is driving our capital waterfall, and we have a capital project before the town boards. We also have a racial imbalance plan, which includes redistricting scenarios and a timeline, which includes community meetings on redistricting that need to be completed by the end of the school year. So it just seems like there's a lot of open items out there. My preference would be for us all to sit down together and kind of just maybe cross some things off of the list. There were some facilities considerations that came out of the ad hoc committee, which the staff did put into different silos. And I think that Mr. Asa's bylaws change will... And I think that Mr. Asa's bylaws change will, for the finance committee, will address some of the more operational and financial aspects of what came out of that committee. The facilities piece, in my opinion, just seems to be hanging out there. When Jen Leeper and I were touring some of the schools with Dr. Jones, we were casually discussing it, and she had mentioned in previous district, they had working meetings, which was, you know, the full board sitting down in maybe a more informal setting to discuss one particular topic, just to facilitate an exchange of ideas. And I'm going to actually, through the chair, to Dr. Jones to maybe just speak more about her experience because this isn't, I appreciate it's a new idea, which is why we're bringing it to the table now.
Dr. Jones?
Sure. Well, I like the suggestion. Both of my previous districts had tremendous amount of construction projects, lots of facilities work. And what happens in a lot of those districts is that you just don't get the time that you need on a regular board agenda to really discuss these big issues. And I like, I like work sessions because they are not as formal. And I, you know, when Ms. Vitale reached out just to ask about thoughts, I kind of likened it to the feeling sometimes that a board has when they're in executive session around a table, and it's more conversational than it is at a board meeting. So you really can, I feel like there's more sharing of ideas and thoughts. And I do think we have some huge facilities issues just looming out there. You know, I put the chart together for the ad hoc committee, people know what's on there, like one high school, that's just sitting out there. And it would be really nice to know if that's something the board is going to want staff to pursue because it would take a tremendous amount of time, we would need a contract for that, or is that something this board could easily put to rest? And then we can alleviate a lot of concerns and worry for staff and for communities. So I'm very supportive of it. I think it would be great to actually hear and have a sharing of ideas about facilities. Would be helpful for me.
Anything final that you want to comment before we go to general board conversation?
Nope, that's it, just trying to get the discussion started.
I didn't focus on which one, so I'll start and just go around the horn, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
I assume that part of what spurred this also was our discussion regarding the Mill Hill EdSpecs.
Yeah.
That that would be something that would be as part of this discussion as well.
Yes.
I mean, and that this would be an appropriate forum for it.
I think that it was just, as, it would be, my thought about it would be really to start with our facilities planning, being that this is what is board-approved at this point. It does have some planning principles in here that I think as a board, we should just revisit as a starting point, being that this is how we approach our facilities. And then just go through, go through the 10-year projections, go through what came out of the ad hoc committee. Because some of that is going to drive, as you said, the Mill Hill discussion. And really just kind of get our ducks in a row over the next month because there is, as you say, the potential of us needing to do EdSpecs for Mill Hill. And when we sit down to have that discussion, it would be nice, in my opinion, just to have some of these other facilities questions, either closure on them or moving forward to get some definitive answers and data.
Yeah, you're still on the floor.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly support the idea of this. I think it's a fantastic idea to have that as a single agenda item and really hash it out. A couple of, I mean, one, I assume we were going to have to, the timing of this has to be relatively quick. I mean, we're talking February, or it's, and again, in terms of considering that Mill Hill EdSpecs calendar, the counting backwards from June, if that's still what we are envisioning, you know, that's really going to set the pace for this. So I assume that's what we're talking about, that, you know, imminently in the next few months, one. And then, two, my other request would be, again, wholeheartedly support this, is I would love some thought put into the organization of that agenda in terms of what order are we doing this in, you know, what's the goal? And I don't say this having a preconceived idea of the answer when I say that, but not wanting it to just be a sit down and say, hey, what do you think? Where do we start? Not to, through the chair, to Mrs. Vitale, to put it solely on her to organize this, but, you know, if you're willing to offer a degree of leadership to just saying what would be the logical way to go through these, you know, with what goal in mind, or just some structure to this, I guess is what I'm asking for. Because otherwise, I think this could turn into a beast. And I really want it to be productive because I think it's an important conversation. I mean, the staff, the board, the other town bodies, they need to know that we have some direction, that we've thoroughly gone through this, and that we have a plan. So I think it's a great idea.
My assumption is that Mrs. Vitale would work with Dr. Jones in kind of memorializing the quick thoughts that Mrs. Vitale had as to what the order would be and the proper order and how to address it and whatnot, and get that on an agenda so it was very clear.
And I thank Mrs. Vitale for offering to come forward and offer that leadership.
Okay. Mr. Asa.
I absolutely like this idea. I like the idea of having it separated from the proposed finance and budget committee. I think having two separate things is good because they are, while they're related, it's a lot of work and having two separate things. I do have a couple of questions, though, maybe the chairman can address. Since I'm not familiar with this type of meeting and work group, it sounds to me like it's a special meeting. Is that correct?
There are only two, correct. There's only two kinds of meetings, regular and special.
So where does public comment fall in a special meeting with this?
Our bylaws do not provide for public comment at special meetings, but our bylaws also provide that the chair has flexibility to amend a public comment where it's appropriate. So based on conversations that we have, it might make sense to have a working session and then at the second working session, have public comment at some point. So I think we can put it in there, but to answer your specific question, it's not specifically called out in the bylaw. So I have to add it just by the discretion of the chair.
Oh.
Just a follow-up on him.
If it's, if it's a follow-up on, I have a couple of questions, but if it's related to this, yes, please.
Follow-up on public comment.
Dr. Jones and I discussed this, you know, how that was going to work. We didn't really come to any set decision, but for some action items, we could elect to put it, to ask the chair to put it on a regular agenda, that the time that would take to maybe address that, it would be less. That we would have done a lot of the conversation and the work in the special meeting, and then we could put action items as part of the regular meeting agenda, potentially. Something just to think about.
Mrs. Pitko wants to follow up on that point?
Please, please.
Mrs. Pitko.
My understanding is that we have four types of meetings. We have executive, town, so my suggestion is if we have special meetings on this topic, could we not have a town hall-style meeting open to the public with the questions?
There is a town hall meeting scheduled for the 28th, and the agenda that we put out there is broad enough that any member of the public could come on February 28th, that's the date, correct? February 28th, and address this issue in the, and I, my presumption is that there would at least be one special meeting called between now and the middle of February to begin this process. And so the public would be able to come on the 28th, if not sooner. We do have two town hall meetings scheduled this year, but there's no reason why we can't create a third at some later date.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Does that answer your question?
So.
Mr. Asa.
As you all know at this table, I didn't support the original ad hoc committee, but it's not because I didn't support the idea. I liked the idea, and I liked the idea of the public being involved. And so for a standing committee, it's an open public meeting and there can be public comment. So I guess what I was getting, and I think what Ms. Pitko was getting, it was she would prefer to have the public be, have the ability to attend and speak at each meeting, but I guess it would depend on the frequency, which we'd have to find out. But I think the engagement of the public in these would be beneficial.
Ms. Pitko, you had some questions or comments in general, but is this a comment on the public comment portion of the conversation? Do you mind?
No, I'm just going to reiterate that I agree, and I love the idea. I think it's important that we have the conversation about all the things that have been put out there. But I also agree with the fact that I would like to see some form or fashion where the public was involved, either in attendance or public comment or some part of that, before we make any decisions on a yea or a nay of any of the items. Just to have, for them to have the ability to chime in if they would like to.
And just to clarify, this is a public meeting. Just because it's a special working meeting does not mean it's in private. It is a public meeting. Ms. Pitko.
Can I, can I ask my last question?
Mr. Asa.
The only last comment I was going to make was, I support this direction and to start, but I think we should keep it open in the back of our minds, that if we feel, after a little while, that this needs to go to a standing committee, that I think, I for one would be open to exploring that, that change. But I think we should at least start the process like this to get it going. But the one concern I have is that just, that we try and figure out a way that as many of us as possible can be here if that's the format that we're going to follow. So I would just ask that when we're picking the meeting dates, if a few could be floated out there, that we could all, so we can try and see when the majority of the people, because not all board members may be able to attend each time. So if the point is to have full board discussion, all I ask is if we could have a few dates to choose from and see what the consensus is, that would be great.
Our format, and to use this as a specific example, would be, since Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Vitale will kind of give leadership to this from the board perspective, that I would contact her, myself, and Dr. Jones and find two or three dates that those three could all meet. And then Mrs. Brown would send those out to board members to see if we can't get everybody at one particular date, or if we end up with eight out of nine, is that enough so that we can keep the ball rolling? So yes, we will be offering more than just one date for choices for board members. There has been some conversation about whether, I'll say, a longer, while we're fresh, Saturday morning type of meeting would be helpful. And I know that various members of this board have active Saturdays, but my guess is you will see at least one Saturday on the options, just to see where the board is on that question.
Let's get the flower order ready for my wife. Thank you.
You do realize that your comment about your wife is on tape now for all time. I just want to kind of.
And I asked you to orchestrate it.
Other comments from the board on Mrs. Vitale's suggestion? Let's see, I'll go with Ms. Pitko, and then you can have the final word.
I agree with Mrs. Vitale's suggestion. I think what confused me was the idea of a working committee. I think that our four types of committee are sufficient, and having a special committee, a special meeting with an agenda, as long as there's an ability at some point for the public to weigh on on what we're talking about, we have a lot in front of us to discuss. And so there's a lot to consider, and ultimately, this board makes that decision, so that makes sense to me, to do this and do this in public.
Our superintendent used the phrase "working committee" because that's what she's familiar with.
Work session.
Work session in her last district, but you'll see the agenda very specifically says "special meetings" because that's Connecticut's terminology, so yes, they'll be posted as special meetings. Mrs. Vitale.
Just to Mr. Asa's point about timing, a lot of this was really brought forth from the Mill Hill discussion and some of the documents that are out there. For expediency purposes, the thought of having to create a standing committee or even advisory committee, with just the process of coming up with a statement, voting on it, it just seemed like it would take time, that maybe just this discussion, we at the very least could start by meeting together, go through the documents that we all are in possession of, but have never been discussed publicly. And then after there, I agree that if we think that we want to have a standing committee or an advisory committee to deal specifically with facilities, I think then we'll at least have some board guidance for that committee moving forward.
Or possibly an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, an advisory, yeah. It's an ad hoc committee because the time, it may not be, need to be for, you know, forever. It may just need to be for a short period of time. So I, it was really just expediency to get some of these things off the table. Thank you.
Any final comments on this topic? Seeing none, on to the first read of an amendment, and that's enclosure number two. And so I'll call Mr. Asa, who's the sponsor.
Okay. So first off, you'll see in here that it says revised, so apologies on behalf of Ms. Leeper and myself, there's a red portion that was changed. Good old copy and paste, not reinventing the wheel with some of the language. We omitted fixing that. So the idea of this has been discussed at past meetings, and some discussion went in to either doing this in the format that was just discussed, or in the format of a standing committee with three board members. We did think about it long and hard, and in the end, decided to want to propose this route, to add this language back in. And it's basically very similar to the language from years ago, from the old finance committee, which also included some other things, but we stripped it down to just finance and budget. And you can see here, if you drill down to number one and two, it may seem a little broad to some, but that allows us, in our opinion, to be able to focus on a variety of things, including some of the things that came out of the ad hoc committee and the list that Dr. Jones is talking about. So we would like to propose moving forward with this and encourage, hopefully all of you have read this, and really encourage if anybody has any major problems or issues or wants to change anything, to bring it up, and hopefully we can move forward with this, and the chair can pick the members.
Questions on the first read? Mr. Peterson.
Go ahead, Jack.
Mr. Peterson, followed by Mrs. Jacobson.
Thank you. I just, more comment, I guess, than a question. You know, having observed from the outside the process of coming up with the ad hoc committee, I think I'm generally in favor of a broader charge. And I think that, kind of knowing the temper of this, of this board, that that may be much more, much more productive. But I guess my question to you in general would be, what complications do you think that that would entail? I mean, clearly you had a discussion about whether a tight or a broad charge would be appropriate. I didn't know if that was something that you, you had specific thoughts about.
Quite honestly, we pretty much stole the language from the, from the old committee, from 2008 to 11, or I'm not sure if those years are correct. But where it says to provide a forum for the superintendent and the superintendent's staff to offer and exchange information about the finances of the school district and annual budget, and that encompasses a lot in itself, including, as I mentioned, a lot of the things that came out of the ad hoc committee. So what we didn't want to do is pigeonhole ourselves into an area that we couldn't do or couldn't discuss per this. So we felt that this has worked very well in the past, and then it can work very well again.
Mrs. Jacobson.
Just under number two, and it's, if this is from the old committee charge, fine, but I'm just curious what you envision when you say to ensure that the board participates in the negotiations of labor agreements with each bargaining unit.
And if I could build on, I want to clarify that number one and number two come directly from the old description.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So what do you envision that being? Because we, there is a board member currently assigned to each of the units during negotiations, but when you say participate, what do you envision by that?
Basically continuing what we're doing.
Oh, okay. Nothing more. Okay. Okay, just to know if you wanted us to get in there. Okay.
No, the chair of the, of the board will always pick who the liaison is to that negotiating committee, but it may give us, you know, if the chair so feels, or the person on the committee so feels, that they need any input or information from the committee, that they can share that. But the person actually participating, and that's, that's actually why we added the last sentence, just to confirm that that will still be the case. That was not in there before.
If I could comment on that, on that. If I could comment on that comment. This board has followed a process where the board meets as a whole, discusses what our negotiating strategy should be, and then asks a negotiating committee that includes one member of the Board of Education, and in the case of certified staff, the two unions that we have with that, also includes a member of the Board of Finance. And then they present back to us the recommended contract, and we always ask them, or they always say, "And this is in keeping with what we believe the direction of the board was. And if the liaison ever comes back with a contract, and the board says, 'You missed our conversation,' well, then you go back to the drawing boards." That is the way this board has done it for years. Other school boards that I've been on, they'll put a two- or three-person negotiating committee together. And I know of some boards who feel, no, we ought to do it as a committee of the whole. As you know, these negotiating sessions can be long, especially when you get into mediation and frequent, and it is never wise for a negotiating committee to have people float in and out. I was there for meeting one, but skipped two and three, and then showed up at meeting four. And so whenever you're appointed to be the liaison, it really is a commitment to kind of be there for each of the meetings so that you can fully understand the flavor, if this board. And so I have always, as a past board member would frequently say over the last four years, when I said, "Well, past practice is," and the gentleman would object to following past practice, "But I'll follow that past practice. But if the board says, 'No, we'd like to discuss and change the way we're doing it,' well, then the full board should discuss that, and we'll follow whatever the majority wants." But your assumption is that we'll follow our past practice as we have in the recent years.
At this point, yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Maxen, Cunnell.
That same number two was where I was, had pause. I don't like, I mean, if it were my drawth, because I don't see how, and maybe this involves a discussion with a board member prior to 2011 of when we dropped this committee, of just what exactly does that mean? Because otherwise, I'm not comfortable with number two at all. Okay, obviously, the second sentence, it's the first one, only because I don't understand it in operation. It sounds very open-ended. It's, what is, what does, and I completely respect that it came out of that wording, but because I wasn't on the board that saw that in practice, I'm not comfortable with that at all, only because I don't see how it's, how it would be applied. So that, I'm just putting that out there as part of this discussion. And then my second question is, is that sort of how I had envisioned, you know, if this bylaw goes ahead, where is there room in this wording for an idea that originates with the board, sort of like with policy, when we say, "Okay, policy, you need to take this up." Where is there the wording in any of these general statements that is an idea that originates with the board? Because so far, the only way that this is a forum for discussion is when it's coming from staff. But if, you know, the board said, "We'd like to," you know, okay, very specific, and I'm not sure that this committee would be the place for this either, but one topic I remember coming up with the ad hoc committee was the notion of replacing textbooks with Chromebooks as a finance issue. Now, I see that sort of Moore's curriculum, but I only, because I can't think of a better example. If an idea originates with the board, that we'd like this committee to pick up, where is the wording for that?
Yes, and Mr. Asa, if I can clarify what I think might be the question in front of the board. This board can refer any issue to any committee. So whether this language suggests that it's only the superintendent, this board can take any issue that they're discussing and refer it to the policy committee, or to the finance committee, or we could refer it to a special meeting to discuss facilities. I guess, to me, the question is, if one member or two members of the finance committee said, "I want to talk about this," and eight members really aren't interested in going down that path, or seven members really aren't interested in that path, does this wording that says "requested by two of its members," does that imply that the chair does not set the agenda for the committee? And therefore, and therefore, those two members can, just on their own, forgetting board discussion, could just say, "I want this added to the agenda." I think that is kind of a corollary of Ms. Maxen Cunnelli's question relative to how issues get in front of this committee.
Yeah, I guess that the formation of the agenda.
Yeah. So let me ask Mr. Asa if he has thoughts on that, and then I'll go to Ms. Jacobson.
Okay.
Now, I just had a question about the policy in the bylaws for the policy committee.
Yeah, I'm happy to let Mrs. Gerber speak.
Okay, then I'll call on you next.
Do you want to let her address that first? Because it might directly...
Ms. Maxen Cunnelli, you want to kind of continue conversation, then we'll get back to Mr. Asa's comment.
Well, I guess...
Ms. Gerber followed by Ms. Jacobson.
Okay, just looking at the bylaw we have for the policy committee, it doesn't explicitly state board members can, there's nothing in here saying about the board members referring things to the policy committee. I think it's implied, as it would be. So just, it's not, it's not as if it's in this bylaw for the policy committee, you know, because I was looking to see if there was language there that then Mr. Asa could use to put in his, and there really isn't.
Is there a purpose section?
The purpose of the policy committee shall be as follows. One, to formulate and recommend written policies by which the board shall exercise its leadership in the operation of the school district. Two, to study and evaluate administrative regulations and reports concerning the execution of the board's written policies in accordance with Article IV, Section 2. That's it. That's the purpose of the policy committee. So it, you know, I mean, we all know the fact that the board can't do that, so I think it's more implied. I mean, I suppose if we were to add that language for this one, we might want to then go ahead and put it in here if we really want to be that explicit.
Right.
But I think the understanding is, we all comprehend the fact that the board is able to go to a committee to give them something to work on, but even though it's not stated in the purpose.
And so if I could, for, again, history for our new board members, by example, if a board member said, "We ought to change this policy," they can go to the chair of the policy committee and say, "I would like this on the agenda." But it would be the chair of the policy committee that would decide whether to put it on the agenda and when to put it in what order based on other priorities. If an individual member says, "You know, the chair of the policy committee is not acting on my request. They're pigeonholing it, they're whatever." That individual member could come to the full board and say, "I think a policy ought to be addressed," and ask the full board to direct that it be put on the agenda. So there are options for individuals to get it. First, just ask, and more often than not, it gets put on the agenda. But if it's not, if you don't think you're getting the immediate attention that it deserves, there are other options to pursue that. Can I get to Ms. Jacobson before we get too far afield and don't...
Yeah, I was just going to say that it's in the rationale, almost, which could be a number three, or it is in this policy, that this committee is a place for new ideas to be explored, researched, and vetted before presenting to the full board for discussion. So it's certainly within the rationale, which could almost be a number three, to speaking to the point. So I'm comfortable that it's in there, but I understand that your point...
Well, it's not in there. The rationale wouldn't be part of the bylaw.
Yeah, purpose, right.
Can I suggest that you look at, I think Ms. Gerber has a good point, that you look at the form of the statement of purpose to provide a forum and try and conform it so that it doesn't look like there's one process for the policy committee, but a different process for finance. Just compare the two to see if there's any adjustment in these words that you think would be helpful in this conversation.
Absolutely. That's, I mean, I'm great, I'm happy that this discussion is happening. To answer the questions really quick, this is a very good question by Ms. Maxen Cunnelli, but I think it was honestly assumed that the board would, as a whole, you know, bring suggestions that would be explored. So if adding it into the language is a better option, then, you know, I don't see where it's a problem. As far as Mr. Dwyer, you say, must hold a meeting whenever requested by two of its members. The way I understood that was two of the finance and budget committee members request a meeting, that it be formed, yes. But there would be a chair elected who would traditionally set the agenda, yes. But I agree with you that I don't foresee a situation where somebody would be, I don't know what the word is, but...
Hijacking.
Yeah, hijacking the committee. I can't speak for the future, just the here and now.
And some of us with experience over the past four years would be a little not as...
I would urge, you know, if Ms. Maxen Cunnelli or anyone else has suggestions that might do that, I would welcome that and be happy to do that so the full board can see it well before they vote on it.
Yeah, and I would only say that the more that the description of this committee conforms with the kind of general description of the policy committee, with the words changed to deal with finance, I think the better off we'll be in terms of just structure of the bylaws. And...
Mr. Dwyer, could I have just one follow-up comment?
Yeah.
Just as a reminder, that one of the objections to the ad hoc committee had been the lack of a specific charge and mission. So I guess that's what I was feeling out of this, is just wanting to make sure that there were some clear parameters, so that there's also clear parameters to what should be done in the committee versus what should be done at the full board. Not so much because of the nine who are here, because I think we have a sense of what we want it to do, but even two years from, well, at this point, almost a year and a half from now, it could be a different group that's up here. And this shouldn't be doing more than it was intended to do, it shouldn't be overreaching. So I guess that was just that feeling of the specificity that some had felt the ad hoc was lacking. I don't know, that was part of what was driving my comments.
Did you, okay, please.
Just to follow up on that, I guess my only thing is, I mean, I'm fine if everyone feels that we need to change the language. I guess the only thing I could just come back to say is that this was the verbatim language that was in the last committee, and I don't believe, I mean, I recall, I wasn't on the board at the time that they formed the committees, but I was here for all the discussions in the audience, and I don't recall there being any controversy in the formation of those committees, nor in how the committees worked. So just for the sake of argument, I mean, this was the policy, this was the bylaw that was created for the policy committee, that was the bylaw created for the finance committee back when they were both formed in 2008. So that's, but again, if people feel we need more specificity, that's fine with me. But they came from the same place, basically, eight years, 10 years ago, so.
I would only make two other comments. The board did a number of years ago adopt a policy, the board did a number of years ago adopt a policy that said, "The board shall review the budget quarterly, and will review it at the level of detail that is in this packet." If the finance committee thinks that they would like to review this activity on a monthly basis, then you actually probably would have to find some way to, whatever the policy is, to correct that. And personally, I would not encourage that. I don't know exactly what percentage, but it's a fairly high percentage of the budget that is encumbered on day one of the fiscal year, because of all the things that are under contract. So there's not a lot of movement from one quarter to the other. And so I would express concern that this not become redundant work for the staff because this board would ask the same questions that would be asked of the finance committee. And if the finance committee started asking for an earlier report at a lot more detail on a monthly basis, that might create issues. So just give that thought as you go forward. Other comments from board members?
I have one last one.
Jacobson.
While I understand some of the purpose of this would be to review the budget and be involved in those discussions on a more regular basis, I also would hope that perhaps some of our conversations around looking to corporate sponsorship and more creative ways of finding revenue or increasing revenue items that we already have would also possibly be a part of this finance committee in order to pursue some of those ideas that I think are very worthwhile for us to go after.
And that actually in my mind, as the budget is constructed, it is the superintendent's recommended budget. You ought to think through as to whether you're expecting the finance committee to have assisted the superintendent in creating that recommended budget, which adds a level of discussion, if you will, on that. Or if the superintendent says, "These are new program initiatives," would you expect the finance committee to kind of give an early review of that rather than the full board? Or if there are fiscal implications of policies, would you expect the finance committee to address each policy that has a fiscal impact? And so when you come back with the full, with whatever, either this exact document or whatever, you might want to address those points, so that we have a flavor for what kind of work you're thinking this finance committee will be doing. And now, this, I would ask Ms. Brown, there's only, because we currently have a B and a C regarding committees. And so by adding this B in there, there should be a sentence at the end that more or less says, the old C becomes, the old B becomes C, and the old C becomes D, because this is an official bylaw change, and it ought to be very clear what the bylaw looks like. Just a minor technical addition. Any other final comments on this as a first read? Mr. Asa.
Just to piggyback on what you're talking about with the ABC, also just if we need to do anything about the numbers in parentheses that are out of order, if that needs to be addressed by the board, or that can be done by Ms. Brown, just some clarification on that would be good.
It's your amendment, so work with Ms. Brown and get it to be correct.
Okay, okay. So there's nothing to change those if we just make it? So I guess what I'm asking is, when I resubmit it, do I have to resubmit the entire section, renumbering those with them crossed out and put in red, or no?
You're talking about the numbering sequence of 9,000.
Yes.
For this purpose, it does not need to be done on here.
Okay.
We adopt this based on a change in the article, in the section, in the subsections, and we, I'll ask Ms. Brown to kind of get the numbering sequence correct.
So in the way this is worded as B, that's correct. But we need to also add in there that we need to change B to C and C to D?
Correct, yeah. Because A is the policy committee, B will be the next standing committee, and then dealing with the other two committees, because generally bylaws talk, describe standing committees first, and then go on to other committee approaches. Any final comments from board members? I understand that you will not be here in February. Do you wish to have this put on the March agenda, or what is your desire?
Ms. Leeper will be here in February. I mean, what is the feeling of, I guess, can I ask the feeling of the board? If we were to make the changes that we discussed here, do you all feel that it's better, since we're both co-sponsoring this change, that we both be here and put this off till March? Or get it on the agenda for February in my absence, vote on it, and get this rolling?
So without having a quasi-vote, if you will, if board members were to say, what is their preference, to have it viewed in February with eight of us, or in March with all nine? Might be the better way to phrase that question.
That's great.
Ms. Vitale.
Thank you for doing this work. I support it. I would like to see it move forward sooner rather than later, so I think that I'd like to see it in February. Trust Ms. Leeper to kind of take up where you left off.
Any other comments from board members on Mr. Asa's question? Mr. Peterson?
I just want to second what Ms. Vitale said, sooner rather than later, we could debate the minutia of it all night long and in many future meetings. But the sooner we get this up and running, if we find any problems with it, I imagine that there is no fundamental problem in amending the charge, amending the bylaw. It would just be an additional agenda item. So my preference would be, get it rolling. If it needs fixing, fix it along the way.
Correct. Only one, just to make sure, in order to amend a bylaw, you need six votes. So... votes. So even the smallest change, if there's any conversation on it, it makes it just a little bit more difficult, because it's not just a minority, it's just not a majority vote.
No, I certainly understand that. And I think that, I mentioned something about the temper of this board earlier. I think that a lot of us, and I don't want to speak for anyone other than myself, my sense is a lot of people are on the same page, and these discussions can be fairly streamlined and toward the same end. It's my hope, anyway. So again, I don't think getting six votes would be too much of a difficulty.
No, but four years from now, 10 years from now, when this bylaw is here...
No, I understand that point.
Mrs. Gerber.
I think moving ahead in February is fine, and I guess I would just say that should, in the next couple of weeks, when there are revisions, if board members aren't happy with those revisions, we can always vote to postpone to a date certain and then vote on it in March. So I'd prefer to have it on the agenda in February, and if problems arise, we would just push it on to March, so.
So we'll place this on the agenda for February 13th, and I presume that you'll be in touch with Ms. Leeper to pass the ball over to her to lead on it.
She's expecting an update tonight.
With no further comment, we'll move on to item number six. Approval of the minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 9, 2018. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Pitko, seconded. Any questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. The second set of minutes, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of January 9, 2018. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Pitko. Seeing no hands up, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. On to superintendent's report.
Just a couple of quick items. First of all, we are starting our kindergarten registration, so you'll start seeing the signs around. And if you have little neighbors that are ready to come to kindergarten, remind them to please. We want to get students enrolled as quickly as we can. It really helps us for the fall. Also, all of our high school registration has started, and lots of transitional meetings happening, from elementary to middle and middle to high. So they're doing a great job really communicating out there with our families. There is a sheet that's being passed around tonight. I just want to make sure each board member sees it. Our special education consultant will be in the district here at Central Office next week, and is offering to meet with each one of you individually. If there's a time that works for you on that sheet, if that time doesn't work, just put a note at the bottom, and we'll call you individually. And you can do a phone call if you need to, or when he's here again in March, I believe, he'll have another segment of meetings as well. So, and that's all for me. Thanks.
Any questions for the superintendent on her report? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
I can't actually remember last year, but do we in any way piggyback the pre-K registration with the kindergarten registration? I mean, is there any reason that that's not started at the same time?
Either Ms. Minor or Ms. Cummings.
Please state your name and position.
Darla Minor, Director of Innovation. The pre-K registration has also begun in January, and for that, parents do fill out a paper application. They come and get it approved, and then they fill out an online application. We do have the language that now does align to the K-12 registration, so moving forward, it'll be a smoother process for our preschool parents if they choose to stay for kindergarten.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
And to the chair, Ms. Minor. I was wondering, to what extent do we actively advertise it, obviously especially to our McKinley population, but to the town in general? Is that, because right now, I know I've been getting the peach jar flash, but is there anything more targeted done for that community?
We do have little posters that we've posted around the district for pre-K, and we're also having on February 8th at the Fairfield Public Library, we're having an orientation for pre-K parents. So that's what we're doing for preschool.
So nothing specific to McKinley?
It's for the whole town, really, to make the whole town aware.
Okay. Given the charge of the pre-K, wouldn't it make sense to do something a little bit more targeted to that population?
Well, all of the principals, when I say targeted, I guess all of the principals are aggressive on getting their pre-K or their kindergartner that information out to their school communities, all 11 elementaries. So I don't think we really do anything different at McKinley, but I think that they all do a good job of recruiting for those programs.
Okay, but aren't we under-enrolled?
In our news section, we worded, right at the beginning of the year, when we added the new pre-K, not really under-enrolled, but our numbers now are...
No, I mean, both classes are full at Burr, and at Stratfield, I believe we have like 15 and 12, or somewhere around those numbers. And we still have new enrollments coming in now at this time of year. And some of our McKinley parents apply for the Burr or the Stratfield program, and if there's room at those programs, they can go there.
And just one last follow-up question. And I know we got a note about this in all of the budget papers, and I don't recall it. At what point are the current four-year-olds in the preschool asked about their kindergarten registration preference?
Just recently sent that out.
Okay.
So parents are getting that information and deciding if they're opting in, if they're from McKinley, are they opting in to Burr or Stratfield, or are they staying? And are you sending your child here for kindergarten in general or not? So all parents are getting that information now.
And am I correct that the information we got said, we sometimes don't hear about that even till the summer? So, I mean, there's, it's highly unlikely that we can say, "Okay, in March, can you tell us where we are with that?" That that's very ongoing?
Yeah, some parents are still deciding, "Do I want to send my child to kindergarten yet, or do I want them to have another year of preschool somewhere else if they feel the child might be a young kindergartner?" And some of them make that decision later on in the summer. We're trying to encourage parents to register them, and they know they have flexibility to change their mind if they need to. So we're trying to get that message out there. We've been meeting with our pre-K parents as they transition up to kindergarten, and some of those questions have come up, and we've encouraged them to reach out to us if they have any questions, and to register their child, because they do have time to still think even after they register.
And we did change the process for pre-K as well, to automate it and make it very simple, where there's an online form this year. We're going to see if that helps, because a lot of times when you're just paper-oriented, things go home and they just don't come back. So they're all getting something in their inbox that gives them, yes, we're coming to kindergarten, they know for sure, or if they're undetermined, we'll also know those, because it may be a PPT process, and they're just not sure what they want to do. But we're hoping we're going to get more of, more feedback quicker.
More communication this year than we had last year.
Yeah.
And there are some allowances in terms of help for, if there's a language issue with these registration forms?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our superintendent? Seeing none, on to committee and liaison reports. Ms. Pitko.
I'm going to start with the Health Department. They're actually having a flu shot clinic on Saturday, starting at 9:00 a.m. If you haven't gotten your flu shot, you want to head down there. And SEPTA is having their next meeting on Wednesday, January 31st, from 7:30 to 9:00 at the McKinley Library. They're welcoming back Mr. Mancusi, our Executive Director of Special Ed and Special Programs, to talk about the new and ongoing 2018, 2019 SPED program initiatives, so if you want to hear about them in more depth. SEPTA Teen Social Group is meeting January 26 from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. It's for middle school students and up.
Any questions for Ms. Pitko? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
I'm just, I want to keep putting out there on the SEPTA meeting, that I hope that they will ask for whatever support they need in terms of getting information about that Medicaid enrollment, you know, so that that, the coordinator here in the central office is supportive, because that's obviously right now, one woman, man, I don't know if the person's been hired yet, team. So just putting out there that I, obviously, you'll be there at the meetings, and that as that goes out there. Just to reiterate that, I hope it's discussed frequently, because it's obviously new. I can imagine anything that involves parental permission in the SEPTA community is going to raise some concerns and some anxiety levels. So I understand it's not on the agenda for Mr. Mancusi then, but I hope soon thereafter, because obviously it's a big commitment from the district, so I hope that comes up.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Pitko? If not, any other board members have committee or liaison reports? None, it's not an official liaison report, but some of you know I'm active in Fairfield Cares, who received a grant and will be sponsoring a Narcon training event for the use of Narcon kits to address the opioid crisis. One of the responsibilities is to get these kits in the hands of underserved populations, people who may have an issue within their family, and it would be helpful to them to be able to have a kit in their car or in their home. The kits will be provided free of charge to people who go through the training. So if any of you know, because of your various community contacts, that a family or an institution would benefit from this training, feel free to put them in touch with me or get in touch with me, so I can give you the date. The date is under discussion at the moment, but once it's set, I can get it to you, so that you could get it to whoever you want to talk to, if they don't really want to have their name known to somebody. I just alert the board to this, because each of you have a variety of community contacts, and it might be helpful information. Any other committee and liaison reports? Seeing none, open board comment. Any members of the board wish to make a comment to the benefit of the good and order? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
I don't know if you want to make any mention of the RTM meeting of this past Monday and this coming Monday?
Okay. The RTM committees reviewed the FEA contract. Then they break down, as a committee of the whole, and then they break down into individual committees. And based on the initial, do you support the contract or not, it would appear as though we have clear support for the FEA contract. A number of people abstained in reserving their final vote for the RTM meeting. As always, because this is a critical vote by the RTM, the more of you who can attend the RTM meeting on this coming Monday would be helpful. They did ask a number of questions and some follow-up questions, which the staff are working on. And so that's an update on the RTM committee. Is there any further, because Mrs. Maxon Cannelly was there, Mrs. Gerber was there, that you'd like to comment? Mrs. Gerber.
Just a reminder that the RTM meeting is going to be at Osborne Hill School.
Yes. And I don't know why they're at Osborne Hill, but I'm sure there's a good and just reason for it, because they enjoy meeting in this room. Any other open board comments from board members? Seeing none, on to public comment. If there's any member of the board, any member of the public that wishes to come forward at this time to talk about agenda items, feel free to do so, on any agenda item other than one that you've already chatted about.
Okay, good. Suzanne Mesken, 123 Rygate Road. On facilities, I am going to make a request and reiterate what many on the board have already asked. If it is a special meeting, I would ask that public comment be granted to members in attendance on those issues, or some other way that the public can provide questions to said committee, whether through the superintendent's office or whatever, just so the public can begin to be part of the beginning, part of the dialogue, as far as questions that people might have at standing. Because again, you know, we've got facilities, and we've got a big Mount Everest that we're still trying to narrow down. So I think the public's opportunity or ability to be involved would be extremely helpful. On the bylaw of the Finance Budget Committee, you know, with all due deference, I've sat here for a very long time. I am at a loss for what this committee is going to be doing. I thought the original intention was that it was going to somehow take a look at facilities. The way this reads, this is kind of looking at budget and finances, and I'm not sure if you're all going to be friends with Mrs. Munsell and Siton Accounting, or, this committee, to me, from a public perspective, just is kind of obscure. And so if it was supposed to be intended to kind of piggyback to facilities, I think we need to be more clear there, because as a member of the public, other than labor negotiations, which I would like to think that that committee would have representation through the chair on those, but other than that, I'm kind of at a loss. Policy is pretty clear as far as regulations and curriculum, but what the Finance Committee does is kind of unclear. And this, bringing this bylaw back, still, to me, from a member of the public, it doesn't tell me what it is you're attempting to do. So I would be looking for clarification. And on a topic that I, I am just going to ask, with, again, in deference to, I know we've discussed the budget already, and I apologize, but I'm going to, give me a little latitude, please, I'm going to ask, is that we have lived through 17 missed students in special ed. To see that we've come back three years later, and we have 22 missed, I respectfully request through the superintendent that a process be established, so that we don't have this happen again. I'm kind of at a loss with the fact that this situation has proposed to bring itself back, and that there was no measures put in place, so that we wouldn't have this surprise. Knowing the way that parents in this town have to go through that process with the school district, and the situations that that causes, I don't know how this could be a surprise. And I respect the review of special ed, but if we could come up with some way to make this stronger, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll take that out of your next three minutes. Any other members of the public wish to come forward to talk about any agenda item? Just to comment on special ed, just if I may, several years ago, the issue was students who arrived over the summer that we didn't know were in the district and were added to our budget. This, quite frankly, was a budgeting error. We knew the students were there, it just was a budgeting error. Sometimes when you're putting all these lines together, you make a mistake in terms of number of students. There probably were some students, but it's not like the issue from four years ago and this issue are exactly the same. With no other public comment, on to adjournment, motion for adjourn, Mr. Asa, Ms. Pitko, all in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.